All right, Madam Chair, I might have to fiddle with our video, but if everyone is all set, then the floor is yours.
Okay, we'll do a roll call again. Mr. Stembridge? Mr. Valencia? Ms. Bede Barazza?
Present.
Mr. Collins?
Here.
Ms. McCall? You, Ms. McCall, are you here? Okay, she doesn't appear to be here yet. President, sorry. Okay, thank you. The floor is yours, Mr. Stembridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We will pick up with case BOA 1547328, with the address of 8 Lawrence Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they explain the case to the board?
The applicant for 8 Lawrence Street, present?
Can you unmute yourself? I should be on as a panel.
Mary Ann E., the applicant for this proposal? Are you present? Hello?
No, I'm not. I'm not the applicant.
Here is the applicant.
Madam Chair, there's someone in the chat under R K U L I C. I believe they might be the applicant.
No, I'm the butter.
He's in a butter.
Okay, apologies, Madam Chair.
Okay. Okay, well, last call. We'll move on and circle back if no one.
Can I say circle back? We have a number of abutters who have written letters and.
I understand. We're waiting for the applicant right now, so if they are not here, we're gonna proceed. Jessica, is there a raised hand from the applicant?
No.
Okay, then I think we can proceed. And we will circle back. I recognize there are letters and we did receive your letters.
So with that, we will move on to case BOA 1534425, with the address of 14 Victoria Street. If the applicants and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
Yes, thank you, Board. I'm Matt Jeski. Our case was heard on February 15th, and our request was for a curb cut in driveway at 14 Victoria. Our request was initially for two parking spots, and after speaking to the Board, we understood that Boston has some really strict rules around front yard parking. And so I believe a member of the Board actually suggesting modifying the request to make it a one parking permit request instead, which we would be totally happy with. I think our main request or our main goal with this request is to install an electric car charging station on the side of the house that you can see there. And a car would fit flush with the front of the house, so there would be no front yard parking with one car parked there. So that's kind of where we're hoping to get to. I think we believe that the look and the goal of this request is similar to some of the driveways that we're seeing on our street and in the neighborhood. So we don't believe that we would be negatively impacting the neighborhood or the value of other property. The house next to us at 16 Victoria actually gave us the idea to make this request because they have a very similar driveway in terms of length and width, and they only park one car. So we're hoping to get some levity and some ideas from the Board. And if the Board is still not inclined, we are hoping to get some suggestions in terms of solutions for residents who are trying to kind of go with the efforts of the City of Boston to transition residents from gas to electric when there are no parking stations nearby in the surrounding neighborhood. So we're kind of hoping for more solutions. We've received unanimous support from the Neighborhood Association. We've got.
Okay, thank you. We'll hear from Neighborhood Services in a moment. Questions from the Board? So I just want to ask a question. You did present at the Subcommittee, and at that time, there was no mention of an electric vehicle. So I just want to clarify whether that was something intended all along and you just didn't reference it, or has your thinking evolved?
No, that was always the idea. I believe it was in the plan when we submitted it written. I think I may have either forgotten or not thought to mention it at the hearing, but that's the main kind of goal for it. I think it would be kind of one of the only solutions because I believe we're not allowed to run an electric cord from the house to the street. So parking next to the house seems to be completely the only solution.
And Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes, so your proposal is just for one compact parking space, correct?
Exactly. I think you have suggested just.
Yeah, right. Just because the survey that I have still has two, but your proposal is just to have one. Okay, great, thanks. No further questions.
And so just to confirm, the current landscape on that street is parking on both sides of the street, correct?
Yes.
And so this would be creating a curb cut where there is none for one vehicle?
Yes, you're right.
Okay. Other questions from the Board?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'm reading the recommendation from the BPDAs. And then the BPDAs mentioned that there is a light pole that has to be relocated, and that makes the project invisible. So I'm looking at the Google map, and there is, yeah, there is a light pole, light pole in front of the.
I received approval that moving the lamppost is actually, has been approved already. If the curb cut is approved, the City, I can look up the person's name, but they mentioned that that is easy enough and has been approved if the rest of the project is approved.
Is Mr. Hampton available to confirm that? Is that a usual sequence of events?
I can't. Thank you, Madam Chair, and the Board. I can't confirm that because that's not us. That might be tech. However, hearing that this would be one space, we already recommend the denial on this because not only about the light pole, but the spaces are too small. But if this was to go down to one space, this would be privatizing the non-street parking space. And I know BTT usually doesn't support this as well. So we'd be opposed to even just the one space.
Thank you. Other questions from the Board? Here are none. Can I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office is going to defer to the judgment of this Board. ONS hosted an abutters meeting on November 8th of 2023. Afterwards, we received no letters in opposition, received three letters in support. The applicant went before the Columbia Southern Hill Civic Organization, Civic Association, excuse me. Their planning committee voted to support 11 to 1, and then they went on to the general membership, which voted to support unanimously. With that, we defer to the Board this time. Thank you.
And Mr. Newman, can you just confirm, if you know, what were they supporting? Two vehicles or one?
I believe it was the two vehicles when they first presented.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the Board. Liam Reavis from Council of Fitzgerald's office. Our office would like to on record and support his proposal.
Thank you.
Mary Ann, we're gonna give testimony here.
I think she's on for the Lawrence Street case.
Yeah, see, can you lower your hands if you're not on for this proposal? She's raising her hand again. Okay, I have no issue with raising hands, sorry.
Okay, any other questions from the Board? Hearing none. May I have a motion?
A motion, I'm not a motion to deny with this just because it's one spot. So you're essentially taking a parking spot from the rest of the community for yourself. So I can, motion to deny.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza?
No.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. McCall?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries.
Could I get more details around what is the Board's suggestions for solutions for residents who are trying to switch to electric cars?
I'm gonna defer you to Samantha and the staff. If Samantha, you can, if you want to reach out to the staff offline.
Yeah, Madam Chair, our office will reach out to the applicant, or the applicant can contact us anytime.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So next, we move on to case BOA 1463517, with the address of 32 to 34 Larch Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they please explain the case to the Board?
Hi, my name is David Quinn. I own the property there at 32-34 Larch Street. Basically, it's in the middle of a gut renovation right now. And the violations were extension of non-conforming use, floor-to-area ratio excessive, and building height excessive. Basically, we're renovating the whole thing, but we're adding a 20-foot shed dormer to the roof to accommodate a 3/4 bath in that top floor portion of that unit. So basically, that dormer is 20 feet long. It adds roughly 85 square feet of living area. So it would increase the floor-to-area ratio. It's currently roughly 0.85 to 0.875. And it's not going to go over the edge of the building or even be as high as the current roof height of the ridge.
Any questions from the Board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office is going to defer to the judgment of this Board. Previously, our office hosted an abutters meeting where no concerns were raised from abutters. The Brighton Alston Improvement Association, which is a civic association for the area, did express some concerns, though, regarding work being done on the property during the community process. We had contacted ISD about this issue. The applicant, I believe, presented to the BAIA but never returned for a final presentation. So I understand that BAIA, BAIA is in opposition at this time. With that, we defer to the Board. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I can comment on that if you'd like.
Well, let's go through public testimony, and then we'll circle back to the applicant.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Okay, then, great. Let's, Mr. Quinn?
Yeah, so I had to let the last contractor go. Basically, the project wasn't moving, and it has been kind of not a very good site. But luckily, I found a couple of good contractors. I'm gonna make that decision between the two of them in the next week so we can get this thing moving forward again.
Thank you. Any other questions from the Board? With that, may I have a motion?
I'm voting no approval with BPDAs. I have a bill.
May I have a second?
Take one.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. McCall?
Yes.
The Chair also votes yes, the motion carries. The vote.
Thank you. Next, we have case BOA 1514536, with the address of 42 Orchard Road. ISD and/or their representative is present, would they explain the case to the Board?
Yes, we are here. Hello. My name is Alpita Peristropouli, representing here the design and architecture team with Korsco Associates. Madam Chair, members of the Board, thank you for giving us the opportunity to present our project to you. We're representing the owners and our clients, Vincent Lee and Helston Properties LLC. I appreciate your time, so I'd like to guide you through the proposal in a brief manner. So with the first slide, we see an image of the proposed building. That second slide, yes, thank you, we can go to the second one, thank you. Thank you very much. This slide is the existing condition of the lot. We are located at the corner of Quarry Road and Orchard Road. The existing footprint of the building will remain unchanged. We have an existing one-story garage structure that we will maintain and improve the utility of it. So with the next slide, we will like to show the existing condition of the current three-story building. So this is how the building is currently presented on the lot. We have three units, one unit per floor with five-bedroom ratio, I believe, per floor. There is a rear egress stair, and the two means of egress are both interior. We have a front entrance from the corner of Quarry and Orchard Street. And then we have a rear egress from the rear side of the property. Currently, we have six, sorry, seven parking spaces. So the left-hand side of the property is utilized only for parking, and so is the rear. And I would like to guide you to the next slide to see the proposed site and landscape configuration we are proposing. So to keep this brief, essentially, we have the existing envelope of the building, which will remain unchanged, and converting it from three units to seven units. So we are seeking to have a new habitable space in the lower level and to convert each floor plate instead of one roof to two units, essentially. In order to do that, we try to maximize the use of open space and landscaping opportunities we have with the existing lot size. So the left-hand side of the property, instead of having two parking spaces, we are proposing to keep one parking space, therefore remove one of the seven and have six proposed parking spaces so that we can create an accessible ramp to the lower-level unit, excavate the entire left-hand side of the property to create enlarged openings and have the lower level with big fenestration and access to outdoor patio and full accessibility with two separate ramps, which was something that was requested during the Neighborhood Community Outreach that we have golfed with our team. And we listened to the comments, and that was one of the comments. So that was a response, a direct response to that. If we can go to the next few slides, please? This is a detailed sheet of the landscape details we are proposing. So we have the existing garage structure to the rear that accommodates two full-size parking spaces. Then we have, as currently used, three tandem in front of that. And we are trying to maximize the use of the garage space by taking a little portion of it to include enclosed trash storage and bike storage to the rear of the garage. So as you can see, we have the front entrance remaining from the corner of Quarry and Orchard. And then the rear side of the property has the accessible ramp guiding you to the lower level. The next slide, please? That was the zoning chart analysis. We are in an MFR1 lot. Our lot size is a little over 5,000 square feet. So it would allow four units, and we're proposing seven units. We have an existing non-conforming setback as the front yard and the side yard do not conform, but it's an existing condition, so we're not altering the footprint of the building. If we can go to the next slide, please? This is a rendered image of the new proposed design. So we'd like to point out that we are elevating the exterior cladding of the building, removing all the vinyl siding that is currently there, adding, I believe, 26 new windows and sliding doors, so maximizing the light component and natural airflow for all the units. If we can go to the next slide, please? So to guide you briefly through the existing condition, what we see here on this slide, the left-hand plan is the lower-level layout, which is currently used as a storage. And then the right-hand side is the first floor. So the current condition has exterior steps with an enclosed porch that we are proposing to open up and extend new balconies. So the floor plate of this one single unit, five bedrooms of the perimeter of the footprint of the building, will be essentially divided into and have one bedroom on either side. If we can go to the next slide, please? Again, this is existing condition of the second and third floor. So the second means of egress is, yes, the second means of egress is located to the rear with a non-to-code stair configuration, which we are proposing to remove and place an exterior stair to the rear to maximize the use of space and the code compliance of the second means of egress. Next slide, please? These are elevations.
Quickly, if you could, try to wrap it up.
Yes, okay. This is the elevations of the existing condition. As you can see, with very small fenestration. If we can go to the next slide, please? Building section, next slide, please? Okay, so here we have the left-hand side, the proposed lower-level unit that allows for a three-bedroom, fully ADA-compliant layout with exterior patio, big large openings, and additional green space by removing that one parking space from the side of the property. The first floor is divided in two. So we have six units from first to third floor of a little bit under 800 square feet, around 800, and then the lower level would be the large 1500 square feet. Next slide, please? So the proposed residential layout for the second and third floor with the exterior stair and new balconies added to the rear. Next slide, please? These are the proposed elevations, where we see on the top left-hand side opening the existing enclosed porch and adding two balconies on the first floor, Juliet balconies on the second and third floor. Like I mentioned, a variety of new window openings, enlarged window openings. So we have now the exterior stair with a wood cladding enclosure. If we can go to the next slide, please?
So just to confirm, the majority of the changes are interior?
Correct.
Like, you're within the building footprint, but you're adding the balconies, correct? Those are the sort of.
We're adding the balconies, correct.
Okay.
Correct. Adding the balconies and the rear exterior stair, yes. So here's a configuration of the building section to show the lower-left-hand side ramp, giving access to the lower level and opening that whole side of the elevation. Next slide, please? And the proposed building section, next slide, please? These are just some 3D modeling sketches to show the flow of the ramps and the new available patios for the lower level and balconies to the rear. Next slide, please? This was a brief study of the materials that we were intending to use with grasscrete pavers, providing, you know, new catered landscape for the rear and perimeter of the building, the wood slab cladding for the exterior stairs to, you know, present some privacy and safety as long as design elements. And next slide, please? And this would be representing our project narrative with the proposed building rendering to the left-hand side and a couple of images showing the main things that we are proposing to change within the landscape. So eliminating that, the parking on the left-hand side to create open space and maximizing the use of landscaping, bringing it to code on energy-efficient windows, sprinkled building, of course. And yes, with this, I'd like to, thank you.
Yes, Madam Chair. So how many parking spaces will you wind up with?
Six.
Six. We did have comments from Barton Meeble about that.
Do you want to beat those into the record?
If the applicant is always unaware, the Park and Transportation Department recommends to remove spaces 3, 4, 5, and 6, and the maximum width for a curb cut should be 12 feet.
Okay. So he's essentially suggesting there'd be only two parking spaces?
That's it. I believe that's what I hear.
Okay. Other questions from the Board?
I would like to understand from the Neighborhood Liaison kind of feedback and any process in regards to parking.
Hi, yeah, good evening, excuse me, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Frank Meadows, also Brighton Liaison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We did host an abutters meeting on September 16th for this project. Applicant, excuse me, some of the attendees had concerns about parking, open space, FAR and density. Attendees who were also abutters at that meeting did share some of those concerns about density and parking, as well as the loss of green space and trash. We did receive two letters of support, excuse me, four letters of support, two from abutters and two from those who were residents of apartments at the existing building. The applicant did present to the Brighton Alston Improvement Association, which did not support the project.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hand, sorry about that.
That's okay. Any other questions from the Board? Mr. Hampton, did you have a recommendation in particular with the parking or questions around the parking? If you're still with us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. No, actually, we didn't have any concerns about the parking. Our only concern was about the design because it is a the Everdine conservation. So we would require if the Board were to approve it, then it'd go to Landmarks for design review.
But Jeff, isn't number six, front yard parking?
If I could see the plan again, I'd love to take a look at it.
And that kind of goes against the BPDAs typical recommendation of no front yard parking?
I'll put it in the chat, if that's all right?
Yeah, and I might say that could be addressed to the design review as well if the Board is so inclined, as Mr. Hampton would say.
Yeah, I'll see. If it's okay, I'll take a look at the plans now and shoot you a chat if that's okay.
Or you can just say it in public record.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
All right, well.
But isn't it a zoning violation that you have parking?
It would be. I don't know if they recited for.
Right.
So let me take a look at it.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, I think the issue is he doesn't have it in front of him, Ms. Bede Barazza. So are there any other questions related to this? If not, is there a motion?
Yeah, yeah.
The public?
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch it. We heard from the public yet.
Jessica just said there were no raised hands, unless I missed that.
There's one raised hand, Madam Chair.
Okay, so now there's a raised hand. Okay, sure. Okay, so that was a raised hand. Okay, sure.
Okay, Nathan, go ahead.
Thank you. This is Nathan Parsons, 97 Williston Road. I'm an immediate Abutter, right to the rear of the property. We strongly oppose. We feel like going from three to seven is excessive. We feel like the parking situation will be way too crowded. It just doesn't fit well with the rest of the neighborhood, so we strongly oppose.
Thank you. Any other raised hands? Jessica?
Yeah, I have no additional raised hands.
Okay. Indeed. Okay, well, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with a proviso that removes parking space number six because I deem that to be front yard parking. And the proviso that it goes under BPDAs design review, given that it is in a Aberdeen Architectural Conservation District.
Is there a second?
Did you say BPDAs, Honzi, or BLC?
Yes, BP, it needs to go in front of Boston Landmark Commission for review.
Yeah, Mr. Hampton, did you clarify the front yard parking issue since we were...
A lot of the plans now, I have a little mouse running my computer today.
Madam Chair, just to clarify, sorry, this is Sam, Madam Chair, for the record. We do also have BPDAs. Are we scrapping that out and changing that to BLC review?
That's, Honzi, that was your...
Yeah, we don't need to see it if it has to go to BLC.
Yes, the BPDAs recommendation did suggest that we should provide a proviso that the plans be submitted to Boston Landmark Commission for design review.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Mukhal?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have case BOA 1513811 with the address of 664 Adams Street. If the applicant in or their representative is present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Hi, you are? My, my turn, Ian? Let's see any notes or raised hands here, please.
Okay, then I, let's keep moving forward, circle back.
Then we would, so we'll have then again for 8th Lane Street. And... Anyone present for case BOA 1547328, or 8th Lane Street?
Okay, seeing as they're not present, can I have a motion? I would.
Motion to adjourn? Is that...
You can either defer or deny without prejudice, or denial, any of the above.
Yeah, I'm motioning to deny without prejudice.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Mukhal?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries.
And that would leave us to circle back to case BOA 1513811 with the address of 664 Adams Street.
Okay, which again, any of the above, defer, de-up, or deny.
I'll make a motion for the denial without prejudice.
Is there a second? Mr. Stembridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Mukhal?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Okay, and if that was the last case, I think we need a five-minute pause to bring us up to 1:00 o'clock. Is that correct, Samantha?
That is correct, Madam Chair.
Okay, we'll see you in...
Recording stopped.